Meeting to order the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, April 2nd. Let me remind all the people in the audience who might address the board, just sign in on the clipboard and make sure you speak clearly into the microphone. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is April 16th at 7:00 PM in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room. Let me appoint Nelson in to a voting position for Michael Redding. And with that, that finishes our call to order. First item on the agenda, first action item is the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Tim, is there anything that we need to do tonight?
Other than item three, no.
Okay. Any questions by members of the board for staff?
Well, I have one, Mr. Chairman. It's a concern which I don't know how we're going to adjust it, but if you look at, on Saturday, Merrimack 360, which is the old Shores thing, was filled to overflowing.
It was on Wednesday night last week as well.
Because the drunken moose, or whatever it's called.
Thirsty moose.
You've got thirsty moose, haywoods, and that, I'm not sure what the hell will happen. I mean, I know Dollar General's going in at the end, but...
They're open.
And there's some more stores going in there. But, you know, I'm thankful that there's something going on.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm a bit worried where people are going to park. There's not much you can do about it.
My guess is that when the newness of the thirsty moose wears off, you're going to see a little bit of a decrease in that parking.
No.
They just opened Tuesday last week, so they're still very new.
Oh, yes.
I went there on Thursday night, and they were very, very full, but it was the NCA Basketball Tournament games were on. The crowd was kind of roaring for that. And when the game ended at nine o'clock, it visibly kind of cleared out. I also went on Sunday for lunch, and by the time lunch was over, they had people waiting for seats on Sunday.
I was there on Saturday, and it was really crowded.
Yep.
But the other thing was the trampoline place was very busy.
That's busy too.
All kinds of kids coming in there at the same time.
Yeah.
I had to park way out in the parker.
Boonies.
So, I have a membership to Planet Fitness right next to the thirsty moose, and it's a tough choice when you have to park and you've got to walk away from the Planet Fitness. And, boy, you could hit the wrong door and not be paying attention, and the next thing you know, you're off to the races. Yes, absolutely. Different shoulder exercises. Anyway, I'm glad that they're doing well.
It's great to see the site doing so well, yes.
We can probably, while we're in the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report, cover the... Oh, I wasn't even looking at that. I was thinking about the conference.
Oh, yes.
The Planning and Zoning Conference.
Make sure everybody's aware of that, and that they can go, and there's an opportunity for the town to cover the cost of that. I want to make sure everybody knows that that's a great conference to get to if you get a chance, so. There's also, just for everybody's information, an announcement that Nashua Regional Planning Commission has moved out, and they're off to Nashua now.
Oh.
They are on...
Temple Street.
Temple Street, yeah. Right near, a block or two from the Superior Court. That Temple Street Building's got a lot of stuff in it that's been redeveloped recently, so. Just FYI on that one.
Yes.
The Pink Elephant?
It was called at one time.
The Temple Street Building?
Yes.
Really?
It was built by England, and thanks. I jumped in.
There's a nice little café on the first floor there that I've been to and know the folks for, so stop in there if you get a chance. Okay. I don't have any other announcements for conferences or any other items. Do you want to do this extension now, or just...
Up to you.
Let's do it in order, because nobody else is here with us. Planning and zoning, item three is the Planning Board Workshop Site Plan Regulations, initial discussion of separation of site plan from subdivision regulations, and, I'm told, a comprehensive rewrite. So, Tim has a presentation for us, and I'm going to go choose a different seat so that I can enjoy the big screen instead of this tiny thing behind me.
No?
No, we can do that at the end.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'll let you...
Let me shift around.
Let you all figure out where you want to sit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a brief overview of what we're going to go over tonight. Over the course of the past year or so, since we shifted gears in our master plan implementation away from doing mixed-use zoning amendments, the project that I've been working on with staff is an overhaul of our site plan regulations, which technically don't really exist today. We have a couple of sections within our subdivision regulations that have our site plan standards. So what we're doing here is creating a new standalone document for our site plan regulations. We'll have a temporary set of subdivision regulations, which I'll explain a little bit as we go forward. And then I want to talk about timeline and process as we move forward, and the process associated with adopting these regulations. Our current regulations were adopted in 1967. They've only been amended 28 times over the course of 52 years, and over half of those amendments have occurred since 2000. The site plan review is handled as a subsection of the subdivision regulations, which is technically not compliant with a couple of state statutes. What we're proposing is a brand-new standalone set of regulations with the following sections in order: general provisions, application procedures and approval processes, design standards, specifications for plans and documents, sections for particular or unique uses, which I'll talk a little bit more in detail when we get there, assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements, and then lastly, administration and enforcement. The layout and design of these regulations is very much in line with a similar project they did over a decade ago when I was the town planner in Londonderry. I oversaw the complete overhaul of their site plan regulations back in 2001. So, I've had some experience, and that kind of laid the baseline for what I've tried to do here with the rewrite of these regulations here in Merrimack. The general provision is a pretty simple section, is it's updated authority per the state statutes. We've expanded a more detailed purpose of the regulations. We really don't have a purpose of our site plan regulations as they exist today because they're in the subdivision regulations. So, we talk about providing safe and attractive development for change and expansion of use, providing for harmonious and authentically pleasing development, planning for open space and green space, encouraging development consistent with our master plan, sustainable development, proper arrangement and coordination of streets and driveways, and go on and on and on, just setting that baseline expectation as to why we review site plans in the first place. That's something that's missing today that I thought was important to have in these new regulations. And then lastly, we've gone through and updated and expanded definitions from what's currently in the subdivision regulations to something more specific to site plans. The next section is application procedures and approval processes. This is, again, a section that really doesn't exist in the current subdivision regulations. So we've updated and revised the application procedure to reflect how it really occurs today in reality. We've clarified and explained what the roles are of the municipal departments and our peer review consultant. We've added sections for conceptual review and pre-application design review, which the statute allows for planning boards and applicants to undertake, but we don't really address in our current regulations. And lastly, we've updated the approval processes, again, to reflect current board practices. Design standards is where the majority of the new language is contained. We've updated the reference documents that the town uses for setting standards and specifications. We have new sections for monumentation, site grading, utilities, water and sewer. Perhaps most importantly, we've revamped and updated our stormwater management, our drainage standards and requirements, including making sure that they're compliant with the new EPA MS4 requirements that the town is required to adhere to. Ideally, if we can move through this process efficiently, June 30th is the EPA's technical deadline for compliance with regulatory standards. So, if we were able to post our new regulations for public hearing at some point in June, we'd at least be able to enforce them at that point, because once we post regulations, they become effective. Continuing on, new section on streets and driveways, a complete overhaul of our landscape design standards, looking at a more informal type of landscaping design, taking advantage of topography and land rather than rigid buffer requirements based on linear standards. Our parking requirements are largely unchanged. Same thing with the building and architectural design requirements. We've slightly tweaked and added to the outdoor lighting standards, and we've included a brand-new section for traffic impact analyses, because right now, there is nothing in any of our regulations that deals with how traffic impact studies should be done. So, this is a section that I'll outline for applicants exactly what we expect in various types of applications. The next section is what we call specification for plan and documents. This is a new section that basically is a, it's basically an itemized checklist. This is what we expect to be on all of the plans: the layout, the notes, what's on the existing conditions plan, your improvement plans, what kind of documents need to be submitted with your plans, what easement requirements that we have, all the things that we need to see for a complete plan. That's what this section essentially is. Then we have this section for standards for particular or unique uses. This is for uses that have specific requirements that are a little bit different than other uses. So we've got a section for commercial wireless communication facilities or cell towers, religious land uses, contractor storage yards, and then we've relocated the existing Section 13 of the subdivision regulation for outlet village shops into this section as well. Section next is for completion and maintenance of improvements. It's a combination of existing and new language on construction procedures, on and off-site improvements, inspections, occupancy permits, and as-built plan requirements. And then lastly, a new section on administration and enforcement, sections for how we deal with future regulations, saving provisions, so that if any part of the regulations were to be found invalid, it doesn't invalidate the entirety of the regulations, waiver requirements, how the board actions work, including a definition of active and substantial development for project vesting. There's a statutory requirement, RSA 67439A, that gives projects protection from future land use regulation changes if they achieve active and substantial development within 12 months. If you don't define what that is, the courts are going to decide for you. So what we've come up with is an actual definition as to what would constitute that active and substantial development to protect somebody from moving forward. Section on what happens if an applicant fails to act on their approval, and then appeals, enforcement, and penalties. We also added some new appendices, the site plan fee schedule, which right now doesn't exist anywhere. We have just this document that's out there in a department, so we want to make it part of the regulations. We've got a couple of landscaping appendices for recommended landscape materials and prohibited landscape materials. Those are the items on the prohibited list that are not allowed by DES as invasive species or other, not recommended for salt tolerance and other reasons. And then some lighting appendices with some recommendations for elimination on some different uses, specifically gas station canopies. Couple of areas that I've left for the board to give us some guidance on. Right now, the town staff does handle some projects on an administrative basis. We're wondering if perhaps it would make sense to have a section that deals with those administrative approvals, or even looking at what's called a minor site plan review. The statutes do allow for the planning board to designate certain members of municipal staff to essentially serve as the planning board for small projects. I know in Londonderry, there was a setup for that, where the town planner, building inspector, and public works director essentially became a three-person board, held a public hearing just like you would here at the planning board, except they held them at nine o'clock in the morning for those small projects, but it still was a step above just an administrative sign-off by staff. It required notice to abutters, just like anything would happen here. So that's one thing I think the board should consider. The second thing is sidewalk language. Right now, I have the following statement in the regulations, that the board may require the construction of sidewalks for pedestrian access to schools, parks, shopping areas, et cetera, particularly when such pedestrian facilities are recommended by the town's master plan or other bicycle pedestrian planning documents. Construction of sidewalks should be in accordance with the subdivision regulations. Do you want more teeth? Do we want to leave that as a flexible requirement that the planning board directs? That's an item I think we need to discuss through this process as well. And then any other items that may arise when we go through and do a more detailed, chapter by chapter, review of these regulations. As I mentioned, we're going to be left with what I'm calling temporary subdivision regulations in the interim, because once we adopt these new site plan regulations, we will be deleting all those sections in the subdivision regulations that are specific to site plan review. The remaining language of the subdivision regulations will be totally unchanged with one exception, and that's a couple of tweaks to definitions to make sure we have consistency between the two documents. Timeline and process, the initial presentation is what I'm doing right now. I'd like to have a couple of workshop discussions, setting up, you know, sections of the regulations that we go over in more detail at some upcoming meetings. I also want to do some solicitation of input from the public, developers, engineering firms, and our peer review consultant, ultimately leading to a public hearing or more, one or two, hopefully. My goal is to have these adopted by July or August of this year, with a posting of public hearing by June 30th, again, to try to meet that deadline to get those stormwater management requirements in place for the EPA. For site plan regulations and subdivision regulations, it does not require town council approval. These are planning board documents and planning board regulations. So the public hearing and adoption is totally within the jurisdiction of the planning board. Once the planning board votes on it, those regulations go into place.
Thank you, Tim, for going through that. It's a great presentation, and there were a couple of things on my mind that I wanted to add for discussion, but I think that you hit kind of the major ones. I don't know if you can flip back to that slide of the things that had administrative approval and a couple of other things on it that you wanted to discuss?
Sure.
Let's do that. I am 100% in favor of outlining administrative approval in some way, how we do it, how things are selected to be eligible for it. I don't know whether it's a desire of the board to, you know, have three people involved and have public hearings on those things in the way you talked about, or whether it's something where, something is so minor that it is just an individual that chooses to do that.
One of the reasons I did not include a minor site plan review committee in these regulations is because you do and are amenable to doing waivers of full site plan review, which was not an option in Londonderry. So that's why Londonderry had the minor site plan review process, given the fact that those smaller, not administrative review projects, but not quite full site plan review projects are coming to the planning board here as waivers of full site plan. That's why I didn't include that. But I certainly agree that having something on administrative approval is totally appropriate.
I really like the idea, whether we call them minor site plans or administrative approval, or whatever the choice of words is, I like the idea. We can figure out what criteria put them in that category or not, kind of at a later time. Conditional use permits, is that fitting in somewhere into the discussion here? We talked at times...
That's a zoning requirement. So those typically are done through the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so we'll address that somewhere else. Changes in use, which don't require any outside construction, is that something you envisioned being part of this administrative approval?
That would be something handled in the administrative review process, yes.
Minor thing, but when we go through some of the chapters, I think that our pretty consistent requirement to do the green snow pro, no salt or low salt, and the other recommendations that come from the Conservation Commission pretty regularly about slow release fertilizer, hay instead of straw, or straw instead of hay.
I believe, and I want to say I didn't include it in the presentation just because of the length and breadth of the document, if I get to landscape requirements, I believe
I think, while you're going through that, I don't know if it helps to talk while you're trying to read at the same time. Some of the projects that we've had where we were considering availability of water supply or impact on water supply, of particular projects, probably could use more support in our regulations than what we've had in the past. That was an item on my mind.
I did find one of the cons columns things on page 20 of the regulations in landscaping. On parcels located the aquifer conservation district and/or wellhead protection area, only low phosphates, low-release nitrogen fertilizer shall be used. That's one of their typical requirements. I know I had something. Parking lots, Section 311, so let me go to Section 311.
Do we have anything in our parking lot regulations that deal with treatment of impervious, of pervious pavement?
We don't at this point, and I just found on page 30, towards the bottom of the page, for parcels, again, within aquifer conservation, wellhead, no salt or chemical deicers to be used. Maintenance shall be performed by a green snow pro-certified or functional equivalent contractor. So I knew I had gotten those in there somewhere.
Good job. Good job on that. We haven't seen very many proposals with it in a long time. It may have kind of been a fashion concept that didn't survive, but if it has or hasn't, and we want to have treatment of pervious pavement, we ought to think about how we would regulate that. We probably should go ahead and write out of the regulation those grass block things that people keep proposing for fire lanes that the fire department rejects.
Those aren't even contemplated in here.
Well, I mean, easier to just rule them out somewhere so that people quit proposing them, or potentially, I don't know, maybe there's some different approaches. There was another one that was on my mind when you were going through it, but it slipped my mind. So, looking at your list up here, I don't mind playing with the sidewalk language and figuring out how to put some definition to certain sections of it to understand more about what we're asking for and where. It kind of fits with the developing work that NRPC is coming through to focus sidewalk construction along the DW corridor and not necessarily think that sidewalks are rubber-stamp parts of everything. I also don't want to refer to the subdivision regulations for what the standards are for how to build sidewalks.
They will be very good standards come the redoing of the subdivision regulations when we finish this process. That's the reason for that reference, because that, among the other things that Public Works is working on is new detailed standards for pavement sections, cross-sections of roadways, sidewalks. Those are all different things that are in the works that are going to be made part of subdivision regulations.
Excellent, wonderful. I was thinking about this in the car on the way over as well, when I was riding by a place with an extraordinary number of overhead power lines, underground power lines, which is kind of already in our regulation for subdivisions, but it may be on some of the larger site plans that we want to impose those things. Let me open it up for others to...
You do, wonderfully.
Well, I'm going to forget some things, and I need a moment to pause and remember the thing that slipped my mind. Other items that are on folks' minds for making sure that we're doing this in harmony with the presentation that Tim provided, which is kind of at a high level at this point?
Yeah, I thought it was an excellent presentation, excellent job in putting this whole thing together. I want to get that on the record. The other thing is, I think there were a couple things that, I'm in the weeds now, you know? I'm just beginning to get through it, and it's going to take a while to get through.
Sure, absolutely.
But I wonder if we could get a copy of your presentation, Tim?
Sure, absolutely.
I think I'd like to have that to help trigger me as I go through this and review it. That's all I have for the moment. I think the tone of this is right, the objective is right, and it looks very complete so far, but I've only done an eighth of an inch into it.
I've got another one where it's down in the weeds in a detail, but when we do the plan requirements, signature blocks go on the right side.
I didn't go so far, Londonderry literally has an exhibit that says, this is where your signature block goes, this is where your notes go. I can do something like that if you're interested.
I don't want to be that prescriptive.
I didn't think so.
I just don't want to, when they put them on the left, and then they bind them, and there's 10 signatures in a plan set, every page is flipping it open and looking for where the heck the signature is.
Lower right-hand corner.
If they put them on the right, I can flip through the corners and do all the signatures and be done in no time. Some of these folks, I have no idea why they want 17 signed plan sets, but...
That's one of the other things that's specifically calling for in these regulations, which plans need signatures and which plans do not.
We ought to indicate some, whatever the appropriate number of plan sets are for the owner and the engineer and the recording and the town, five, six, seven, after that, maybe there's a fee for more. For you guys, not for me, I mean, put it in the department, but at some point, there seems to be no reason for them not to ask for more, and they just, oh, well, we got 11, you know, sign 20 of them. Doesn't seem to be any logic to that choice at all. Nelson, did you have other thoughts?
One of the things that hopped into my head was anything, and I don't think we have it now, but do we want to include something about expiration of site plans? We talk about vesting, but is there a period of time that this thing can stay alive and after which you've got to come back here, or you've got to redo it?
Well, vesting kind of touches that. So you get a year to do some substantial work, and if you do, then you're vested. Once you're vested, by statute, you're permanently forevermore there.
Okay, I didn't see that in here.
It was one of the late slides that Tim went over. Tim, can you kind of grab to that one? I mean, the answers weren't always there, but the questions were.
Failure to act on approvals.
Failure to act on approvals.
If the board has not obtained an extension in accordance with RSA 6764F and has not approved or denied the plan within 65 days, is accepted, the applicant shall...
That's not what I meant.
That's not it. But, yeah, ultimately, when it comes to the statutory language, that's why we've included the whole section on vesting, is if you're not vested, then you're basically set with that 12-month period if you don't do anything. But as long as regulations don't change, statutorily, it's very difficult to revoke a site plan without going through the specific revocation process outlined in the statute.
Okay, which we practically have never done.
Nobody does, really.
Well, and we should, you know, we can talk about the pros and cons of either side of that when we get to that section. It may be that there's no reason to be particularly harsh on people and say, you know, you've got to move or else. If nothing's changed in our regulations...
Getting plans, I totally agree with timeframes on conditional approvals before they're signed, but once they're signed, that's when it gets touchy.
Yeah.
We can definitely kind of attack and sort that out as we go through. Other comments by anyone?
I'm ready through, and I'm in accordance with what you've said.
I really like your choice of the way that you've divided up the sections. I think that that makes a lot of sense to do that. That makes it a really good document to go through. I know that conditional use permits are over in the zoning ordinance. I think that as we've discussed, other kinds of innovative site plan reviews and, oh, the names form are kind of slipping my mind right now in terms of trading off some features that we desire for some extra density or some things that the...
Transfer development rights and things of that nature, yeah.
When I first started serving on the planning board, it's been almost 10 years ago now, those things all seemed very appealing, to have all this flexibility built into the regulation, and people can, performance-based, that's what it was. Having had the opportunity to sit on the other side of the table as an applicant a couple of times, they're horrific. I hate those regulations. Not because of what the regulations say, but because they don't say anything. Everything is just an absolute vague...
The lack of certainty does make it very difficult on the developer's side of things, I agree.
It's an absolute vague grab-bag, and your only approach is to go to the board and say, hey, do you really like this?
Do you like this?
Is this pretty?
Yeah.
And if it is, then you get it, and if it's not, then you don't. And it just feels terribly unfair from an applicant's standpoint. So, I'm happy to support the idea that we not necessarily build in those kinds of ambiguous stuff. Also, in a similar vein, I've encountered some towns that do architectural design review in certain areas as part of their site plan, and I'm not in favor of it.
I have not touched what's existing in today's regulations. I didn't want to go there. I've lived the other side, and it's, you're right, it can be very daunting and tedious and difficult.
So, I don't mind the process of going through it and taking a look at it, but there's just impossible to put any kind of substantial standards on it. And so it still ends up being, do you like this? You know, is it white clapboard? Does everybody like white clapboard? You know, that's not fair. I mean, applicant ought to be able to do whatever they want.
But there are towns, surely, Mr. Chairman, that actually have these in system. I'm thinking about it.
Oh, and they're horrible.
Londonderry has them.
Concord has them. Manchester probably has them in certain areas.
Concord is part of the most difficult ones, yeah.
They end up being this total ambiguous grab-bag. You show up, you have no idea what's going to happen. You hope that you get a few people excited about your project, so they vote for it, and if they don't... And that's not what site plan regulations are supposed to be about. The applicant should know what's going to happen before they come in the room. They should know where they've met all the standards.
They have reasonable expectations, absolutely.
That's a good point.
And not be in here with guessing and saying, well, gee, I hope everybody likes green, you know?
The way I look at regulations, it's a cookbook. If you use the ingredients and you follow the checklist and the guidelines, you end up with a good project at the end.
Exactly. I agree. So, anyway, I don't need to comment on what's not in here anymore. Thank you for indulgence.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Neil.
I like that you have the traffic analysis in there, definitely, but I was looking at the standards for particular...
But I was looking at the standards for particular or unique uses. And I was wondering if we should add, like, we've had a lot of situations where we have dog parks popping up everywhere and we seem to have this unknowing about what the impacts are of having those in certain areas. So like dog parks, also, we've had the solar arrays come in to town and maybe, again, it's very new, so maybe touch base as to what we should be requiring on those as well.
Yeah, we've spent some time, Public Works in particular, on the dog park issue. There's just no guidance anywhere out there from the state or anybody. It's, again, it has a lot to do with MS4, degradation of, you know, surface waters. And that's where the concern has come from, from Dawn and Public Works. But there's just nothing out there for literature that really deals with it at this level. So it's, we'll take a look and we'll continue digging on it, but it's certainly something worth considering.
Whether it's the dog parks or the doggy daycares, I was thinking, when you said a dog park, so I was thinking more the daycares. But the environmental, you know, animal waste is one element of it. Some noise regulations related to that could be an important one as well. Requiring that people, as a part of their design features, have thought about ways to dampen noise, whether that's with landscape plantings that, you know, muffle some sounds, whether it's keeping the visual stimulus down so the dogs aren't barking. But the, we're never going to go out afterwards and say, oh, I can hear your dogs barking, you're not doing it right. But having people build into their design some features that insulate their building or do whatever. The one that had been brought to our attention that's over by Columbia Circle is, you know, a metal building that's like everything else on Columbia Circle. And the racket from the dogs just does not ever stop. And it's loud and it's, it's...
It's annoying.
...affects the neighbors. Now, the one over here by the Common Man, they figured out, I mean, not Common Man, by Homestead. They've figured out different solutions. I don't know whether they manage differently or their building's different or whatever, but...
It's because Dawn did the project, that's why.
What's that?
It's because Dawn did that project before she worked for us.
There you go. Could well be. You know, maybe it's insulating the walls in the building, or maybe it's the way you manage it. Maybe it's the number of dogs. I don't know what it is, but they're black and white, day and night differences. And we shouldn't, on Columbia Circle, I don't care if there's dogs barking. That's what that kind of area is for. But when they're going to put them next to people's houses, we ought to be able to come up with some way of figuring out how to do that. Nelson?
I was just going to say about the dog waste, I think we could put in something that says those places have to manage or pick up their waste. I think we had, I think we had a workable solution with the pickup, and I think we have it in place up...
And I think we'll have to look at what, how we handle Edgburk when they come back with their final plans, because I know that was a big part of the discussion on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Harris Pond as well, right? Down by heart, Harris Pond.
That's what he meant, it's Edgburk.
Edgburk, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, Edgburk's the one with the kind of the private area. But then we've had now two other doggy daycares that have a little bit of a play yard and one of them happened to be near another water body, so same issue.
The one on Wire Road is gone, so that's not happening anymore, so.
Okay, don't need to beat the subject to death.
We've got a few things.
Dan?
Just a few quick questions, Tim. Is the school board required to do a site plan review when they do anything? Okay, so when they decide if that, like turf field decides to go through, then they can, they're on their own?
They're governed by RSA 674-54, governmental land uses, which basically exempts municipalities, the state, and any governmental agency from meeting land use regulations.
Okay. I was just curious, because I know that's going to be a pretty big issue coming up, but I don't know if there was anything we could do to take a look at what's going on.
We could require them to come in and do a non-binding public hearing, but they would be then free to ignore everything you tell them.
Okay. Now, the parking lot in parking spaces, we've talked about this ad nauseam. Any thoughts on revisiting that? Now, the moose is a whole nother story because of the overflow. But like places like Tractor Supply, for example, I know that project was done a while back, but there's a lot of empty space. And that was to regulations into this document. Any thoughts about maybe trying to reduce the number of spaces for some of these larger...
We just did the parking requirements, what was it, 2013 or 2012-ish? Shortly after I started, I know we completely redid parking requirements. Anything post that would be new. Because it was relatively new, we didn't really take any deep dive into it. But I'm certainly willing, if the board wants to go through and take a deeper dive when we go through that section, I'm amenable to looking at the standards.
I just don't know if other towns have, you know, come up with that solution too. I mean, I know, like, if you look at the shaws that way, I mean, it's, half that parking lot is never full, yet they was up to requirement, so.
Some of those are under previous requirements. Both of the shaws and the Home Depot are the ones that are always on my mind for being massively overparking-lotted.
Sure.
And part of the reason why we did the redo on this was to figure out how to manage big sites and bring them down.
We reduced the requirement for larger retail establishments by almost half.
We haven't had a new one, though, in a while.
Not in a while, no.
So that's why, I mean, the Thursey Moose parking lot, that was the same way. That never, that didn't change.
And they received, they received some waivers.
Some waiver, yeah, right, I remember that.
Yeah.
And it looks really, really full, so... But we haven't had a big commercial property parking lot yet, so, in a while. So I'm just curious, you know, if we do get another one, is it just going to, you know, if we go by these requirements, it's just going to be another wasted space?
I don't think so, because like I said, for the larger retail uses, we now, it used to be, I think it was one per 200.
Yeah.
We now require for smaller ones, one per 250.
Okay.
And then for the larger, greater than 75,000 square feet, one per 300 square feet.
Right. Yeah, no, and once we start to learn a bit more information about these larger apartment complexes, you know, I know some people ask for waivers, 100, you know, 100 spots or less. And, you know, that's their own prerogative to do, and that's their problem. It'd be curious to see if, how the numbers are accurate.
Oh, absolutely.
But, okay, that was just a thought I had.
Let me follow up on that one before you switch over from leaving that. We, I mean, we have had these big apartment buildings come forward and those are going to be a bit of a test for us. Some of these older redevelopment parcels, since we're getting close to being kind of full build-out, we're going to be redeveloping almost exclusively for big sites. Places like, well, you mentioned Tractor Supply. That was a bowling alley. I mean, that was designed for, for the kind of population and traffic you'd need at that site for that.
It was a supermarket.
Yeah, even before that.
Before it was a bowling alley, before it was a bowling alley, it was a supermarket.
And so when you do that, you've kind of switched from A to B to C. You know, nobody's going in there and saying, well, you've got to take out some parking lots because you don't need it.
And that whole site was approved under the old PUD requirements, which really basically had free-for-all for parking at that stadium.
I would like to think through, is there anything that we can do that describes the criteria to support a waiver from the applicant standpoint that kind of tells, gives us something to go on when we're deciding waiver?
I think we kind of got away from that, but we, ever since we rewrote the parking requirements, there are supposed to be several other requirements. You're supposed to, if you look at page 26, the board can grant waivers. One of the criteria has to be the two statutory criteria, which are listed as one and two. And then you have to meet another one, which is demonstrating through similar studies of similar facilities that parking demand is significantly different than the requirements. And documented, there haven't been any parking shortages at those studied sites, that there's available alternative transportation, that it's a sole business, not part of a multi-tenant that's primarily oriented to walk-up. And then on-street parking is the other one. But that item number three is supposed to be something the board considers every time we grant the parking waiver, is that whole section, which we've kind of gotten away from. And I think we're going to emphasize more that that has to...
I think we should go back to the, yeah.
Because that's part of the regulations today when we rewrote those several years ago.
Now, we grant waivers all the time for things that are not sole businesses.
Yep.
I mean...
Absolutely.
The Thursey Moose thing. On the other side of the coin, when there's the development like the Thursey Moose, where they're using all their spaces, and I hope that they stay that busy the whole time, and if not them, Planet Fitness or whoever else is in there. The double-edged sword is what happens if you didn't build them enough and now they start to park up the driveway and around the building and that sort of thing.
There's still technicism, parking spaces around the side that can be used that... There'd be the drop-dead emergency overflow at this point. There may be some additional development happening on that lot that'd be coming to you guys at some point in the future as well, so.
Excellent. Okay, I don't have any more. Thank you, Dan, for letting me interrupt your discussion of parking lots.
I've just got two more things. Special section, any thoughts on cannabis cultivation?
We've got the one we have, and by statute, there can't be another one in this region of the state.
We've got the distribution, the cultivation's the growth facility.
Cultivation's Peterborough, yeah, that's...
Well, I'm just curious because New Hampshire's kind of...
We do have zoning requirements for that. I did that when, before the dispensary came in. In our zoning ordinance, there's language specific to both cultivation and dispensaries.
Yeah, because I think New Hampshire's going to start getting involved with that. So I don't know if we want to be in the forefront or on the back end.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, because I think, I think what that needs is more of, you know, where it can be done, you know what I mean? Like industrial only or commercial only, that type of thing?
Oh, in there already.
Okay.
I'll give you the section reference, you can look it up.
Because I know, I know once it decides that the state of New Hampshire's going to make it legal to grow, that most likely we'll probably get some applications for it.
We may actually, though. Typically, the grow facility wants the lowest-priced community it can get into. And so it makes sense to distribute here, which is a facility we have, but you grow it. Small towns somewhere far out in the country tend to be.
2.02, point two, part D, is the standards for alternative treatment centers and cultivation sites.
What document are you in?
I'm in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
This was something that we had public hearings on and then the council had their public hearing adopted.
Yeah, we kind of did this pretty quickly when we knew that there was going to be an applicant for the prime center.
Yeah, no, I don't know if that's something, maybe something, maybe not in this revision, but definitely down the road, I think it's going to happen. I mean, just like Massachusetts, like a Maine, Vermont, it's all around us, so it's going to eventually be there. And it's, it's obviously a good source of tax income, so something to think about. And then the final one, Tim, and I think, who have I emailed? Nelson, impact fees. Do we have any thoughts on that? I mean, I know you're chuckling at me, but I firmly believe that there is some language that needs to be talked about, whether adapted or not. I think we're losing a lot of money for the town. It's just something that I think we should take a look at.
That would be a zoning ordinance amendment that would have to also have council approval. And I can tell you, at least with the current makeup of the council, they will never approve it. I've worked in a community that had them, then got in huge trouble with the state and now has none. They have basically rescinded and suspended all of their impact fees based on their issues with administration, collection, and everything involved with them. They, I, in a vacuum, I think they're a great idea. In practice, they are extremely difficult to manage properly according to statutes. But I'm certainly willing to consider that, but I think that would be something separate from the site plan regs.
I just didn't know if that was appropriate for this, but to rebut what you just said, there's other towns that have done it very, very well and use their funds. So the fact that you think Mayor Matt can't do it's a little nearsighted.
I'm not saying we can't. I'm, from a standpoint of where we are politically with the makeup of our council, I think it's unlikely.
Well, fair enough. I just, you know, unfortunately, doing some math on some other towns, just based on three projects, we, you know, we missed out about $1.3 million, so.
Well, it's tough to do a math like that and say, oh, well, this town had some projects and they collected up some money. And so if we'd done the same thing, we would have got the same money.
The issue is, is you have to have a project specific for that money to be used for in your capital improvements program.
Which we do, which we have wastewater treatment, we have the new safety building. Those are just the name of two.
Those don't work for impact fees. Your impact fees have to be exactly tied to what they're, what impact they made. And so, yeah, I mean, if they add a bunch of residential facilities, you could tie that to the wastewater treatment plant. That's also a little bit tenuous as well. But just saying, you could tax somebody because you've got a pet project, it's got to be pretty closely tied to what their...
So adding more residents isn't closely tied with more police and fire?
Those are not capital expenditures that you can do impact fees for, so...
If you build a new building, it is.
It is, but so you've got 100 new residences in a town of 27,000, so you allocate their impact fee to be, you know, $100 a residence. And you say, okay, well, we got $10,000. You've got six years to spend that on a $4 million building. And if you don't spend it, you give it back. And that's part of the management that Tim's talking about that makes this really, really difficult to do. When you say we have them in the plan, we could get them if it was the will of the leadership to kind of lead and manage the town that way. They're not necessarily already sitting in front of us.
I understand that, I understand that.
I have, like I said, I have experience in administering them from the planning side of things and the assessment and impact. It's, the financial end is really the tricky part that One and Air ran into significant issues with just because of the complexity. And the other thing associated with impact fees, you have to have rock-solid methodologies that justify what you're charging for that particular impact fee. One and Air did schools, fire, police, library, and there was very detailed updates every two years that consultants had to put together in order to justify those impact fees and what the specific fees were for each type of development.
The other part to that, which was kind of weighing in before, more than focusing on what capital improvement projects we have, it's tough to do the math and say, well, you had these impact fees that you could have gotten and you didn't get them. I know for a fact that there are a lot of developers, some that have come through my office, that pass on London Derry, that pass on Keene and Peterborough, that pass on Concord, because it ain't worth it to do business in those towns.
That's the economic development side.
And that's the choice that you make when you try to figure that out. Now, what does that mean? Maybe those towns say, good riddance, I don't want that development here. Maybe you look at it and you say, well, those were jobs that were important to some of the people here. Maybe those were the kinds of amenities that makes a community walkable and we wanted to have those things here. So it's not always as simple as saying, well, we had, you know, 18 projects and if they had impact fees, they would have paid $2 million and we missed out. It's more complicated than that. I don't know if Dan was finished, I don't want to...
No, I'm going to jump in on that same. Subject was that in the case of the premium outlets, we actually did get an impact fee.
An exaction is what that was.
Okay, but...
Different, different things statutory.
Yeah, we had to use some different semantics, so we made sure we didn't have to give it back.
But we got the money, that's...
Yeah, I remember that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. It still hasn't been used.
And exactions are something that the planning board is also, is authorized to do under statute for off-site improvements and impacts. You can ask for exactions. The way that we've typically done it, and most communities do it, that don't have impact fees or don't use exactions, is you require them to construct those off-site improvements that would have been paid for through those exactions.
Which we have done in other cases as well, Edgburk, for example.
Yep, exactly.
And Flatley, yeah.
They've been around. I think that there could be some more room to discuss how you deal with some off-site improvements and the costs of them. It's really a complicated bit of equation to figure out whether a particular development causes you to need that third lane or whatever, and is it, does it land entirely on them to pay for that cost?
Hopefully now with the standards we're adopting for traffic, it'll help us get to that point.
I do really like that idea, too. I don't know what those, what those requirements will finally look like when we're done discussing them, but I love the idea that we have some kind of a guidance on that. What about water and environmental protection and things? I know that, obviously, there's so much concern about the PFOA and PFAS and development. And I know that that gets into the DES stuff.
It's one of those things that I don't know that if we, we could certainly try to do it, but I think if we're challenged on it, we're probably going to get the, because we're a Dillon's rule state and we haven't been specifically authorized to regulate those things by the legislature, that we can't.
Well, some of the things that's in the general grant of authority for planning boards about seeking the health and safety and, and that sort of thing, are the supports that we use for the regulations we already have could equally apply to those other kinds of concepts.
We'd have to look deeper into it.
Yeah. Or at least discuss it. And maybe we all discuss it and decide that it isn't the path that we want to go down. But if this is, you know, if the hood's up, let's, let's take a look at all the possible things that we might want to put in our engine. Others? I hate it.
Okay, one more quick one. Is there any way, or I don't know if this is even part of this, but is there any way to say, like, the town can only have two dog parks, two gun stores, two dollar stores? Is there any way to do that?
No. Ultimately, in New Hampshire and in the United States, private property owners have rights within the confines of zoning.
There's no like town ordinance or something we can develop that says, we have two gun stores, that's enough, I don't need a third?
Not uh, that I'm aware of, no.
Interesting. But we can ban plastic bags, we just can't tell people what to do.
I don't even know if legally you could do that.
You may have a problem.
Well, it, not, not as a planning board matter, can we ban plastic bags?
Even, even city councils or town meeting, I'm not sure if there's the legal authority on that as well.
The states are doing it.
States, states are doing, some municipalities are doing it, and some in, in New Hampshire will try to do it and kind of expand things. Um, there was a case probably 10 years ago that dealt with um, indoor smoking regulations. And it was at a time where the state wasn't quite at the place of trying to prohibit indoor smoking. And so I don't know what town it was, Portsmouth or Manchester, wrote some local regulations to prohibit indoor smoking. And the state squashed them. Um, told them, you don't have the authority to do that. We've never, the, the towns and.
Because we're not a home rule state, we only are empowered to do what the state legislature empowers us to do.
Yep. Towns and counties are subdivisions of the state and they only have the authority granted to them. And it, among, among many other reasons, that's why you also don't get a chance to say, this is how many grocery stores.
Free or die, right?
Well, it is, but you know, I, I, I'm not sure even if we were um, empowered to do that, that I'd necessarily support going down the path of um, deciding whether we've got enough of a thing, whatever that thing might be.
The only way you could legally do something like that is if you develop reasonably defensible standards, say for the same instances as sexually oriented business, where you have certain distances from X, Y, and Z. You could somewhat zone out some things like that by doing it in that manner.
Which we have done.
Which for sexually oriented businesses, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, I think it's interesting, and I know we've tried this before, is getting other supermarkets in here and things like that. I mean, you look at what's happening in Bedford with the Trader Joe's and Whole Foods and all these, all these things are getting built up and people go there. Um, people don't wanna come to the dollar store and gun stores. That's what I'm trying to say, is like, it'd be nice if there was a way. I, I know it's not you, I'm just venting for a minute. Um, it's just, it'd be nice if we could get a Whole Foods, you know what I mean? But I understand, I get it.
But, but, if you think about it, and given what we've been going through in previous weeks, I'm sure Mr. Flatley has tried very hard to do that, and he's had no joy at all.
Yeah. The, the appeal to Whole Foods is not a matter of what other business choices we have here, it's do you have enough, a population of people that wanna come be their customers? And Bedford has, has almost the same population as Merrimack, and it's right next to Manchester and drawing Manchester's traffic. So that's what makes that a, a more attractive site for them. But I, I, I wouldn't personally support the idea of looking at any business and saying, I don't wanna pick on, you know, guns and, and gun shops, cause I know how sensitive that issue is. But yeah, we have got enough landscapers or we've got enough, um, whatever, but we don't need anymore. Um, even if we had, you know, we got two grocery stores and somebody says, well, that's plenty, we don't need more grocery stores. Well, you know what? The third one is good, the one that's gonna lower the prices and have some competition with the other two, and that's good for the world. And if there's, you know, five daycares and one of them has to lower their prices a little bit to compete with the other ones, or offer better services, or bigger, uh, better teachers or something, that's.
Of course, our double edged sword with that is the extended stay hotels start competing on price too.
Absolutely. Um, we ought to think about, oh, that, that's a good point. We thought about regulating outdoor security cameras and that sort of thing for that kind of a site. And we felt, I think at the time we were discussing it, that we were a little hamstrung on our ability to do that. But we ought to um, for, for the right kinds of businesses, um, understand what their security plan is.
Good catch, yep.
Lighting, cameras, that sort of thing.
There was one mention I, like I said with Nelson, I got this far into it, but um, with the lighting, it said business hours. Lights go off when the business is closed, lights go on when it's open, but there's no defined time. Is that something?
That's something the board could condition as part of your approval on a site plan.
Cause if you're at the moose, you want that thing open till whenever, but if you're at King Cone, you wanna close it, I don't know.
Yeah.
It, it has to do with how far you are to the residential, I get that. So maybe the moose is a bad example, but King Cone isn't, it's right there, so. Keep using everyone's name here, sorry. But you know what I'm trying to say?
I do.
Is uh, they're like, it, it, I think we have an establishment in town, that's a gym, that's purple, that uh, has a 24 hours, right? So their lights stay on the whole time. Um, versus somebody that's, you know, where the old, versus somebody else like a gas station, right, that has to close, that's close to an apartment building. Um, didn't know if that, I, I just read it briefly. I didn't know if I'm barking up the wrong tree.
I, I'd have to go back, it's been a while since I looked at the lighting.
That, that one caught my eye, I just, I actually circled that one, I was like, wow, that's interesting. I didn't, didn't really realize that we don't have set times, but.
Yeah. The, the town does not have any specific town ordinance for that.
Depends upon the business, I think was always our feeling.
Board has always had the ability to, as part of site plan review, uh, stipulate hours of operation.
We've also on occasion, Dan, that's a good catch as well. Um, with the outlet mall, we've required that their lights go off as they, as they close specifically to make sure that they don't leave them on just to keep the site lit, because it does affect the neighbors down below them. Um, or, yeah, below them on one part of the lot and above them on another part. So that um, we're not necessarily telling them, you can't be open for the longer hours or whatever suits your business. But when you're done, turn the lights off and don't leave them on and pollute and.
I think a lot of what we're discussing right here and some of these afterthought things we might wanna add, raises the question that I, I hadn't really considered until now, is do we wanna put in something that allows for the board and developers to set up development agreements specific to, which has a lot of these requirements spelled out? And we record similar to what we do with our mixed use projects.
I think that that could be pretty interesting. Now, when we do development agreements, we tend to require that there be one. And then it gets punted off to, I don't know, town council or, or somewhere else. And I don't know that we're necessarily weighing in on what's in a development agreement too much.
Why I think if, if you're interested in doing something like that, it would, I think it would be something we'd wanna include in and provide some basic outline and guidance in the document.
I would, I would not want the board to necessarily become a, a negotiator over development agreements. But if, as a part of our conditions of approval, there were some elements we wanted to have included in a development agreement, we could say, you know, make sure it's got the lighting and the green snow pro and the, the no blasting. And that's all the input we need on a development agreement, the rest of it is left elsewhere. I think that there could be some interest in doing that.
All right, let's, food for thought.
Do we want to, I, I guess we can figure it out when we get to that discussion, but it probably only applies to bigger projects.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah. There's very few projects that would.
That's why right now it's only been with the mixed use projects, just because of the complexity.
Yeah, that's where I would expect it, yeah.
You know, there are some that have been um, developed that were not necessarily enormous projects, but they're pretty significant commercial projects. Um, a certain car dealer um, that was developed. And while they were under construction, they rented all of the portable li- lights on stanchions. And when, the way that they positioned them, when you were at the red lights nearby, you were unable to see. Cause you were getting blasted with their, you know, 40,000 lumen, whatevers. And just simple things like that, like, you know, knowing how you're gonna deal with silt fence and um, you know, upon Chamberlain Hill and all that.
One of the things that I, I will point out specifically that I borrowed, and I think it's one of the better things that Lendary had that I think we're gonna have, is adding a couple of notes, required notes to plans. Uh, one being that if during construction it becomes apparent that deficiency exists in the approved designs, the owner should be required to correct, correct the deficiencies to the requirements of the regulations at no expense to the town. And if during construction it becomes apparent additional erosion control measures are required to stop any erosion on the construction site due to actual site conditions, the owner required to install at no expense to the town.
Those are good.
Those are both good.
Yeah, I like both of those. Um, what comes to mind is the very small couple of lots subdivision that we had where the developer was a particular challenging individual to work with and ended up building some things out of compliance and then wants relief, and we end up with compliance hearings where we really don't know what to do, so we, you know, talk really tough to the guy. And nothing really happens with a whole of any of that. Um, I know with subdivisions, we have this idea of, of um, having someone submit a performance bond for the infrastructure improvements that are ultimately potentially could become public and not for any other improvements. Um, I wonder, is there a way that we could deal with um, projects where we're concerned about the applicant complying with the commitments that they've made? Um, by having some kind of a bond performance?
For offsite improvements, I have no, no qualms about that at all. It's when you get to the onsite stuff that it's, I have, I go back again to my previous employer and I don't like the way that they handle those things. It just adds a significant amount of cost to the project process that.
And I think you'd have to do it for all projects. If you do it for one, you gotta do it for everybody.
And they do.
I'm not sure that you do, but.
Well.
Um, if you establish the criteria for when you kick it in and when you don't kick it in, you can um, follow those criteria. The other possibility is, this maybe kind of more fits in with the development agreement kind of a concept, but requiring someone to have a supervising engineer to monitor their work and make sure they're building it in compliance with whatever it is that, that was ultimately approved. The challenge with that for me is that a lot of the bigger builders are not the offenders. It's the little guys and the little, you know, putting.
We're thinking of one in particular.
Yeah, we are, and I don't want name names, but um, you know, it's one individual, but there's others, there's others that are, that are challenging to work with and.
Yeah, you might see that individual next month on another site, by the way.
That'll be fun. Other things that we wanna make sure that we include, this isn't necessarily the only opportunity to do this, but I know that we wanna um, try to get something that looks like a, a public hearing in June, which means things start to gel over the next couple of months.
I was gonna say, I'd be looking to do workshops probably the second, depending on what we have for applications each meeting. Um, I, I basically would be using that as my guideline as to which meeting during the month I'd propose having a workshop meeting. Uh, the question is, do you wanna try to chop this in half or by section by section? I was thinking if we're gonna do two workshops and then move to hearing, we probably wanna go half the regulations, let me go to my outline here.
Yeah, well, divide them up in the way that you think is digestible in a reasonable period of time, cause it may be that there's some sections that go quickly and.
General provisions, application, general position, provisions, there's really nothing to review there, to be honest with you. It's, that's the one that's, that's really cut dried. The other six, I think if we do three per month, I think we will get somewhere. So if we did uh, the first four, general provisions, application procedures, design standards and specs next month, and then standards for neat uses, you know, assurances, and then administrative enforcement last.
So, to, what, what dates did you attach to those?
I haven't yet. What I, what I, what I was just mentioning is based on what we get for applications in advance of those months, I would gauge which meeting made more sense to put this on, so that we don't overload you on a night and just.
Okay, I just wanted to have a target to shoot for, to get you these comments.
Assume that the first meeting of May would be the next time we discuss. That's my initial target. If that changes based on applications, I will let you know.
Okay.
So we'll assume that'll be the first meeting of the month, but subject to change if we have a glut of applications.
Yeah. Well, it'll only slide out, it won't slide.
It will only slide out two weeks.
That's way, that gives me a deadline to get this back to you.
Um, signs are in our zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance, correct.
Um, why? I don't know of another town that does.
Signs in the zoning ordinance? Every town does signs in the zoning ordinance that I'm aware of.
Concord does, I'm in the planning board regulation.
They have in that architectural design, it's also in zoning as well.
Well, you get variances if you're gonna not comply with some particular regulation, but your general approval.
That's part of their ADRC process.
I, I'm not looking to kind of expand our review, but I don't know that there is a lot of review of signs that the public is, can participate in the way that we're doing it right now.
And we just did, before Gillian went to Portsmouth, she did uh, revamp on uh, the signs following the uh, court case, the Supreme Court case a couple of years back.
Yep. Yeah, I remember, I remember dealing with First Amendment issues, and I'm not trying to tackle those, and I don't wanna go into that area. I don't wanna go into temporary signs, um, and that sort of thing. We've got a relatively non-public process for signs now, where the world really doesn't know what's gonna happen with a sign. Planning board doesn't know what's gonna happen with a sign unless it's a conditional use permit, and then we deal with signs.
We could simply add a requirement that signage has to be part of the details associated with the site plan, that way you get that opportunity.
Yeah. Well, um, again, I'm not trying to put my arms around something we don't want, but what do you guys think?
Is when somebody's doing a site plan, they don't have a specific tenant. And you end up with a generic detail in your site plan package that really doesn't tell you much.
Well, then they have to come back if they change some of that.
Something, that's something the board can consider, and I'm.
That gives you the visibility that Bob's talking about.
Well, that's true, although having something where someone comes with a, with a generic monument ground sign that says, it's gonna look like this. And then they uh, find a tenant whose ground sign is, you know, three feet taller and two feet wider. And having them come back to the planning board for that is a hoop that I'm not necessarily eager to impose on anybody. I don't mind having a bit of a public process to say, the sign's gonna be here, it's gonna be electric, it's gonna be lit on the outside. But I don't necessarily wanna get um, to the point where we've actually looked at a photograph and said, yes, that's approvable and that's not. Both because I don't wanna make people keep coming back if it moves an inch one way or another. Um, but also um, I don't want it to be an ambiguous, no standard review. It should simply be, you know, does the sign comply with, with site plan regulations like everything else?
We, we've got standards, and if they come in with a standard sign, we'd give them the approval. It's when they get into other sizes and shapes and things, that's where we have the problem.
Of this board, that's the zoning board that deals with those.
Board, so yeah, if they wanted to be bigger, taller, wider, or whatever, those are all um, uh, built into zoning ordinances generally. Anyway, all right, leave it alone, uh, leave it out.
I don't know, I'd put it in.
We'll have that discussion in a month.
All right, let's have that discussion in a month. Um, I guess if it ain't broke, kind of an approach is a, is.
Tim, can I ask you a quick question, so I can sleep at night? Multi-family dwellings, residential buildings designed for, for are occupied by three or more families. Why is that three and not two?
State statute.
Okay. Well, I need to know, thank you. Seems like it should be two, but.
Two is a duplex, which under New Hampshire rules is not subject to planning board review.
Interesting. No, that's good information, thank you. I was gonna lose my mind.
Because technically, technically, multi-family development is considered a commercial use per purposes of.
Right, and a duplex is a residential?
Is it a residential.
Gotcha, so that's a big difference. Thank you.
As are all now, all of the AD, uh, dwelling units, ADUs. I lost my acronym there for a second, I had to spell it out.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim, for uh, all the work that went into this. I think it's fantastic to do. I wanna make sure that each of the planning board members has enough time to read and digest this, cause there's a lot to it. And I'm glad that we're not trying to take a, action on these kinds of things in the interim.
Before we go, what, what is our goal reading this? You want us to like mark it up or like give you feedback as, or just hold on to this until our meeting again?
I would mark up, if you have anything that you want me to take a look at in advance of the May meeting, certainly send me an email.
Okay.
Uh, but otherwise, yeah, mark up, have questions and comments ready to go on uh, the meeting in May and we'll make amendments after that.
Yeah, I just wanna, I was just trying to figure out what, what you wanted us to.
I think the best way to bring discussions to the board is to say, you know, the ordinance does A, I'd like it to do B, rather than fixing language and saying, I think it should say this sentence. Cause the wordsmithing, Tim can handle that. Um, let, let him figure out how to make the ordinance do what we want it to do. And let's talk about, you know, hey, I'd like there to be, you know, a, a wider sidewalk or whatever it is that we want, would, would wanna build into them. Um, I'm glad though, that there's some sidewalk standards coming for how we're gonna do that, I think that's gonna be cool too. Thank you, Tim, for the presentation. That concludes item three on our agenda. Item four is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. We've got this uh, correspondence from Fieldstone Land Consultants, which I haven't taken a look at.
Uh, just summarizing, Mr. Chairman, there, this is for the MyBox project on Herrick Street off of DW Highway. Their uh, uh, headquarters and storage facility, they have finally gotten their approval from DOT. Uh, but their project is set to expire tomorrow. Uh, we as staff have, do not have enough time to review and get it for you guys uh, for signatures, so they are requesting an extension. They don't have a specific date. I would recommend we give them three months just to make sure that in case there's something still there, we're not shutting them off and having them come back here again.
Can you, yeah, what was the project?
This is MyBox, they are the self-storage uh, mobile self-storage, the one that they, this is a new facility down in the hole, I don't know if you know where Herrick Street is off of DW Highway.
I mean, I drive by that building all the time, I'm trying to picture it.
This is, this is a completely different.
Not on Continental Boulevard, this is on DW Highway down there where Nashua Corp and.
And it's almost opposite the, the bank.
Yeah.
Uh, what?
Citizens.
Citizens Bank, gotcha.
Yeah, it's gonna be lower setback and I, once, my understanding is, is that when they get that new facility constructed, they'll be leaving the Continental Boulevard.
So what was the? So what was the, what was the DOT stuff?
Because it's access, the only access to and from Herrick Street is from DW Highway, it's their jurisdiction, it's not the town on portion.
Okay. No, I was just kidding.
There is an American flag on the new building, though.
Yes, there is.
There's gonna be one on the new building, too, if you recall.
Okay. Tim's suggestion is that we give them a three-month extension.
Six is a typical.
I would say six.
I'd give them six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant them a six-month extension.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to grant that extension. Are there any other items of concern for discussion today?
Minutes, you got minutes?
We do have minutes.
We do have minutes, that'd be the next agenda item. We have the minutes of March 19th, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstaining. We don't have Zenas, so.
I got it.
Announce it. Oh, you got it. Okay. 4-0-1 to approve the minutes. They are approved. That concludes our agenda business for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second that, too.
Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to adjourn. Thank you all. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.